...twenty twenty-two will please come to order. Good evening. For to those of you who are in attendance this evening, if you would, please take a second and check your cell phone and make sure that it is on silent or vibrate. Although we're all big fans of baseball hats, if you could. Now, those of you who have a hat on, if you could please remove it. And then for those of you who are participating remotely, we would ask that you place your microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments as they wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record, and after completing the comment, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute. And we thank all of you, whether you're participating remotely or in person, for your cooperation. And with that, if you would, please join us in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Normally, we'd be approving the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting, but since it was canceled due to a lack of a quorum, we will dispense with that and move into petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorial.
Yes, Mr. President, we have Appeal Number 2022-02 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council and the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is a use variance to allow microblading at an existing salon, 3931 Lincoln Way East. The name is That Hair Place. This is signed by Linda and Stephen Cook. We have Appeal Number 2022-04 to the Honorable Common Council and Board of Zoning Appeals. This use variance is to allow microblading at an existing salon at 1238 University Drive. This petition is signed by Kristen. We also have a public hearing on vacation 2022-01 required by state law on behalf of the DEV at 4506 Lincoln Way East LLC for the right-of-way vacation for a planned adjacent car wash development, Drive &amp; Shine, located at Wayne Street and Pennsylvania Avenue on undeveloped land.
Thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing on proposed vacation 2022-01. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Steve Ruby, Abin Marsh Consulting, representing Drive &amp; Shine, located South Bend, 315 West Jefferson. Here to speak in favor for the Drive &amp; Shine facility. It's an improvement to the site. The owner is purchasing land adjacent to the properties of the other side of Wayne's Wayne Street, which will require the vacation of the street and set improvements there as well as along Pennsylvania, the undeveloped portion of it.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of proposed vacation 2022-01? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of proposed ros- uh, vacation, I'm sorry, 2022-01? Is there anyone physically present with us this evening who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed vacation? If so, please come forward.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jim Schoen. I live in Miami Club Drive in Mishawaka. I'm not so sure I'm speaking in opposition or in favor. I just want to make sure a concern is being considered in the vacation of of this street. That is, March is is Disabilities Awareness Month, and it's it's become, it's heightened our awareness of those who are not able to drive. I happen to be visually impaired. I cannot drive and and so transpo and and transpo as well as the trolley is my mode of transportation as well as with a lot of lot of people. And there is a bus stop that I want to draw your attention to that's at that's right about where Wayne Street would would, if it were to let out onto Lincoln Way, would be there. The northwest corner of, well, Wayne Street, of course, is very close to the northwest corner of Wayne Street and Lincoln Way East. And right about there is is a very important bus stop for those of us that need transpo and the trolley to get to where we're going. I just want to make sure that 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 bus stop, which is very important because it's the only one in that vicinity, and that is a very busy, very dangerous intersection if if you are pedestrian, you have to navigate. And and I later next month or so, I would like to address that that larger issue. But but for now, I just want to make sure that that there will be no nothing to impede the the availability of of pedestrians, especially disabled pedestrians, to be able to to wait for the bus there. I don't know exactly what is how it's going to change. It looks like there will be radical changes, and I I also would like to know if MACOG has been contacted on this vacation issue. I understand that MACOG is 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 the administering agency that oversees transpo and the trolley. And and I think that it they are also in charge of or oversee places where buses need to or should be able to stop for pedestrians. So that is my, I am not speaking in favor of or against. I am just wanting to call your attention to that very important bus stop that's at that right about where Wayne Street would egress onto Lincoln Way, on the northwest corner of Bittersweet and Lincoln Way East. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schoen. Good to see you again. I will ask the petitioner's representative and perhaps Mr. Prince to address those issues in a moment here, but first, let's see if any council members have any questions for you before you sit down. Any questions for Mr. Schoen?
No question. Just thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else for Mr. Schoen and Mr. Belovich?
Mr. Schoen, if you need a ride home tonight after the meeting, I'd be happy to oblige.
Fantastic. I may. It's a it's a fifty-fifty. My wife is always late. Thank you.
Any other questions? Then thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed vacation?
Hello, council. Just a citizen that lives in the area.
If you could, please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Kristen Staype. I live on 4112 Vestula Road, which is about two or three blocks away from the location.
Thank you.
I do not want Drive &amp; Shine there because the corner that it would be placed on.
If I can stop you?
Yeah.
We're only talking about the vacation of the street at this point in time. Later on, and it's a technicality under Indiana law, later on, we're going to be talking about the rezoning and the fact that Drive &amp; Shine is asking to be located there. Right now, we're just talking about the streets that surround that property and whether they ought to be vacated or closed to public use.
Okay. Thank you.
But I promise you, and I'll keep my eye out for you. When we get to that point, I'll give you the nod and you can come up and talk about that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against the proposed vacation? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak against the proposed vacation? All right. Before I ask to have Mr. Schoen's points addressed, are there any questions or comments from the council? Then, sir, if you want to, or Mr. Prince, whomever wishes to go first, if you want to address the bus stop and MACOG issues, I think we'd appreciate it.
Yes, Steve Ruby again, representing Drive &amp; Shine. The best bus stop location is not being changed in any way, shape, or form. Wayne Street with the vacation of Wayne Street, it's reducing traffic flow. It's going to become a private drive at that point in time, so there's no conflict there. We are also improving the walks to and from on the front, or I say the front, but the Lincoln Way portion or the southern portion of the site as well as the east side of the site along Bittersweet, where in fact, we're improving pedestrian movements along the property limits, which currently do not exist. Currently, it is a lawn, and for pedestrians to diverse that area, and a smooth surface that would be in the street currently. So we are improving those situations, but MACOG has not been contacted because we did not plan on altering that bus stop location, so it'll still remain as it stands.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Any additional questions from the council? Mrs. Volker.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. I just have a question. So, right now, the bus stop is at Wayne Street, and it becomes a private drive, and is that private drive the drive in and out of Drive &amp; Shine?
No. The Drive &amp; Shine driveway is currently located off of Bittersweet and will remain there. The All-Star Car Wash that is existing there currently is utilizing that same driveway. So we're not changing any flow onto Wayne Street or onto Lincoln Way, and in fact, Wayne Street is a dead-end street currently. So with the removal of that street, the there's only one property that's going to be located right there, and it's going to become a private drive with this vacation.
Oh. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, members of the council, Ken Prince, Director of Planning and Community Development. It's great to see Mr. Schoen. It's been a while. I would note exactly what Mr. Ruby said is that this will actually improve the situation regarding accessibility. So the amount of traffic on Wayne Street, it essentially becomes a private driveway, so the existing bus stop should not be altered, and the additional sidewalks should improve accessibility to that corner. I will, and I also need to say that the bus stop locations are are independent of anything the city does, so MACOG is the entity responsible for installing those. They get, so if they wanted to, they could adjust it, they could move it, and that would occur independently of any action the city would take. But the what is being proposed doesn't inherently alter that what they currently have at all. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll ask again if there are any additional questions or comments from the council at this point. Hearing none, then we will close the public hearing on vacation 2022-01. We will once again revisit this issue under ordinances on second reading, not only with regard to the vacation of the street, but also with that rezoning issue that we're going to make sure that at least one person gets to speak on later on in the meeting. So thank you. And with that, this this evening, we have no report of any special committee nor any ordinances on first. Oh, we have one other item. I got ahead of myself, Madam Clerk.
Don't get the same, so you've got to give me the opportunity.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is from the Board of Zoning Appeals' recommendation for their public hearing, which was held March 8, 2022. Honorable members, a regular meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals was held on the above referenced date, at which time the following use variances were considered. Appeal Number 2022-02, an appeal submitted by Stephen and Linda Cook requesting a use variance for 3931 Lincoln Way East for That Hair Place to allow microblading services at an existing salon. The board with a vote of four to zero recommended approval. Appeal Number 2022-04, an appeal submitted by Five City Plaza LLC seeking a use variance for 1238 East University Drive, Granger, to allow microblading services in an existing salon. The board with a vote of four to zero recommended approval. This is signed by Carrie Myers, administrative planner.
Thank you. And now, since we have no report of any special committee nor any ordinances on first reading, we'll move into resolutions.
Resolution Number R2022-03, a resolution of the City of Mishawaka Common Council establishing a municipal riverfront re- riverfront front development project area within the recently designated redevelopment project area.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on proposed resolution 2022-22-03. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward.
Mr. President, members of the council, Ken Prince, Director of Planning and Community Development, for what will be the fifth and hopefully final public hearing on this matter. So going back to the early 2000s, the city adopted a riverfront district primarily for the purpose of establishing an area where lower-priced liquor licenses could be obtained by state law. So liquor license, as you know, are all regulated through the state, so this was an avenue that we saw that could increase the availability of a lower-priced liquor license, which we thought would aid in the benefit of the developing restaurants and businesses because of the way the liquor license law works regarding three-way. We have a disproportionate number of restaurants relative to our population, so that because it's a finite number increases the price, which makes it difficult for those restaurants that want to open and have a liquor license, that those liquor license could go well over $200,000, whereas the lower Riverwalk license, our riverfront district license, can be in the $5,000 range in terms of cost. So that was the reason that that district was proposed at that time, and at that time, it was primarily for the downtown. Well, what we found during that time is we had repeated inquiries of people coming to us saying, we'd like a river license, but they weren't located in the area. And since we're limited by the distance from the river or water body by state law, we decided to expand it. In 2018, we took what we thought the absolute limits were, so we could remove that argument of anyone being in or out of the district, and we tried to put the maximum area in as required by state law. What we did at that time is we followed the floodplain identified by the flood insurance rate maps, um, that we didn't look at carefully enough, because when you look at the flood insurance rate maps, there's an area on the east side of town where the water body actually goes outside of, so I'm not just talking about the bank and the floodplain, I'm talking about the actual water body goes outside of the flood limit area. And so what this amendment does is essentially broadens the district to include the additional area based on that water body that goes outside of the floodplain. And really, it expands the area along Lincoln Way. The air, the the entity that's been referenced multiple times is the Curve Cafe, so based on the actual water located in the river, the Curve Cafe, with the passage of this would be available to have a liquor license at a reduced rate compared to the current location, which puts them out of that that district. And it's not just for them, obviously, it's other businesses that have the ability to be impacted along Lincoln Way and that area. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I hope not to be back before you on this for a long time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince?
Mr. Prince, just one item of clarification, and thank you for your work on this and your staff's work.
Sure.
As you mentioned, we are creating the riverfront district to the maximum extent as we interpret Indiana law, but would you also agree with me that we do not grant the individual liquor licenses within that district? That a restaurant, an entity, an individual who wants to apply for it has to go through a separate regulatory process through the state of Indiana? So this doesn't grant any particular personal liquor license at this point in time, just sets the stage for that process to play out.
That is correct, and I would also note that this also doesn't approve the zoning that is necessary for a restaurant to go in, so there are other regulations that every business would have to follow in order to apply.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Prince? And thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present with us this evening who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you, if so, please come forward to the podium. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone with us this evening who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please pull the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmens?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes nine two zero. Resolution Number R2022-04, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, adding parcels to the city's property acquisition list associated with a previously approved Common Council Resolution 2014-07, which approved an order of the City of Mishawaka Plan Commission approving a cer- certain declaratory resolution, an amendment to the boundaries of the Northwest Area Improvement Project, consolidation of the South Side Economic Development Area, and the Northwest Improvements Project into one consolidated area, excuse me, one consolidated area improvement project, and an amendment to the economic development plan for the consolidated area improvements project adopted by the City of Mishawaka Redevelopment Commission.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on proposed resolution 2022-04. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, thank you. Council members, Dave Wood, Mayor, here to speak in support of Resolution 2022-04. And when I tell you what it's for, as you probably know, if you're not laughing or scratching your head, you're probably thinking, I'm a little on the crazy side to propose this. But this is a property that we all know very well. Many of us have special personal connection to it, whether family that work there or neighbors who work there. It's in many ways synonymous with manufacturing in Mishawaka, going back to the late 1880s. It's the Dodge RMG site. Since the past 30 years, 1990s, it's essentially been decaying on our city's near south side, right on the edge of our downtown. We've had many, many service calls to that site over the years, including the second biggest fire in city history on one particular evening that you may recall. Well, it's been decaying. It has been collecting artifacts there over time, owners have, and we, I love how Mishawaka works, you go to a neighborhood meeting for for Woody's Neighborhood, and we come out with an agreement to buy Dodge, if we can get it through the council. But anyway, we were approached by the owners of the property who are looking to sell the property. It will sell, but they asked if we were interested. Before, you know, thinking about it further, I said we would be interested. Having thought about it more, I'm thinking, why the heck would we be interested? But it is decaying. It will get acquired if we don't buy it, and it will continue to be a drag on city services. There is no improvement on that property unless that, to the extent that it will need to be approved as far as the structures get demolished and the environment get clean, no one will do it and do it right, except for the City of Mishawaka, in my opinion. And so while it wasn't on our radar, and we were promised a good price, and I quickly reminded the owner that, look, you could give us that property for free, and we will have to spend millions to clean it. So any price you give us that's good, keep that in mind. But we were looking to acquire some of that property anyway. We know we have some needs for city services. It is next to the fire station number one. We know that as our services become more busy, we have record run volume, we know that as equipment gets bigger, we're backing our biggest fire engine into Station One. We would like to expand our apparatus bay so that we can have drive-through opportunity there at Station One. We know that we need a new salt barn and cold storage facility at our central services department, and that's one area that we could go and acquire property so that we could do some of those improvements. We would like to have a road that connects Union Street at 7th to Laurel Street at 6th. We have had that in kind of loose planning for quite a while. This would give us that opportunity, and we were going to have to buy that property, and we would spend more for that property than we would have for the entire property. So we have those needs. We know that this property can't be saved. We know that it would take far and away more resources than anyone could bear to save it, and therefore, we think that it could be left to decay, in which case, what would happen? Our code enforcement department, which is already involved there, would have to be more and more involved there. Our police department would be more and more involved there, and we've already seen the second biggest fire in city history there. What could other fire call-outs there look like? So we think it's our responsibility to add this to our acquisition list so that we can acquire the property and that we can control its redevelopment, which I think strategically located next to our downtown could be a a great opportunity for city growth, you know, in the next few years. It's going to be, as near as we can figure, about a $13 million cleanup and re- and investment into that site. It will, like I said, this wasn't on our radar, so we can't just plug this money in today. We're looking at about a four-year or so period to get this site to where it's ready to redevelop. And so what it would look like for us is if we purchase, or if we get the approval here tonight, we will do a purchase agreement. We will give the owner of the property a year to clear off the property of anything nonstructure. So that would be the semi-trailers or the, you know, endless things that are in the the building, the buildings itself. And so the nice thing about this is that we would have access to the site throughout that year. So the owner is very, very knowledgeable of the site and would be willing to grant us access anytime, whether it's our consultants to explore cleanup opportunities or us to, say, take a tour if you wanted to take a tour. But anyway, we would have that resource for the year while it's getting cleaned off, and then after the year, we would take possession of it and finalize the the deal. So with that, myself, Ken Prince, are here to answer any questions. Ken's going to likely be the project manager, and he, if he doesn't resign first, which I'm sure he won't, but anyway, we we know it's a big project. It it's really one of the biggest, most important projects we could take on, just because of what it means for the future of Mishawaka, this site that's meant so much for Mishawaka's past. And while I have toured it and am nostalgic about it, it is an industrial wasteland, and there's no other way to put it than that. And now is our opportunity to seize that and to seize the opportunity and to make it better for Mishawaka's residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mayor Wood?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the the information. And as you mentioned, the the cleanup cost is, will far dwarf and outweigh the the cost of acquisition. And if you mentioned it, I apologize for missing it, but with regard to the purchase price of the property, are we at a point where we can quantify that, or is that dependent upon appraisals and some other actions to take place?
So we agreed to $250,000.
Proving the point, that the acquisition cost is much less than the cleanup cost. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mayor Wood? Mrs. Volker.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment, and that's just such a hole in the middle of the city that is not productive for anybody and is a safety issue for everybody. And I think that cleaning it up is really important, and I also think putting a street through there to connect the neighborhood to Union, from a public safety standpoint, is really going to be important for the growth of the city. So I, you know, as much as it's going to, you know, be a cost to the city, I- So I, you know, as much as it's gonna, you know, be a cost to the city, I think in the long term, I think it's really gonna be beneficial for Michawaca. Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mayor, basically, all the buildings would come down except for the one that is there in the front, which was the architectural building?
Yes, so that was the former Dodge office building. That is, most recently, the Troyer Group Architectural Firm. That is owned by a different group, and that's not a part of this transaction. So the property lines are a little, you know, kind of...
They're not straight.
Around there, they're not straight. Yeah, five feet from that building on two sides, and so this would not include that building. That building is actually very marketable, and we would look to square off some property lines maybe as part of this as well, to, you know, make sure that whatever happens there benefits the neighbors, including maybe some of the office space around there, and make their property a little more marketable.
Basically, all the building that runs up parallel with the railroad tracks all the way from...
Right.
Union Street all the way over to Laurel.
Anything that's really big and really ugly, you can, in that site, which is about twenty, it's twenty-five acres-ish, so...
And also the guard shack, the old guard shack.
Right. And the substations are, they've been taking the substation down already, right behind our fire station, so that's part of it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think downtown, when we tore that down next to the river, didn't we seek out and get some assistance from some previous insurance companies to help with some of the cleanup? Would that be a possibility with this as well?
It will be a possibility, and we will also look to maybe secure some brownfield grant funding to help us with our endeavors here. So that'll be part of what we'll do. You know, I would say that we're not experts, but we're pretty darn good at brownfield remediation here in Michawaca, having dealt with Uniroil properties among others. So, you know, I think we have the skills, both in-house and with consultants, to deal with this pretty successfully.
So while we could be thirteen million out of pocket, we could, there could be some restitution somewhere down the road.
That's a possibility.
All right, thank you.
One other question, and I apologize. Going back to the finances, both for the acquisition price and then the remediation and cleanup costs, can you talk a little bit about what the source would be of the funding that would take care of both of those obligations?
TIF. Unless we can get some other grant funding, which we will certainly pursue if it makes sense for us.
And if you want to defer to Mr. Prince on this, certainly that'd be okay, but we have the capacity within our TIF fund to be able to cover these costs, correct?
To cover the original acquisition cost, we do. To cover the thirteen million or so cleanup, we will have to re-rack the deck, as Mr. Prince suggests on a few occasions. So that doesn't mean that we won't be able to get it done, but to get this done, we may have to postpone another project. But again, this one has, you know, not been, not having been on our radar to now being somewhat of a priority to get it and to, we don't want to keep empty structures around longer than we have to, so we know that that will come with some pretty significant demo costs. So that, then, we would use TIF or some brownfield insurance types of monies if we can find them, and then we would push a couple, maybe one or two or whatever projects back to handle this one.
Appreciate that clarification.
Take that for it.
Any other questions for Mayor Wood?
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Please come forward.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Ken Prince, Director of Planning and Community Development, again. I just want to add to what the mayor had commented on regarding funding. So I, we had a discussion with the state brownfield coordinator. They were excited to hear about this potential acquisition from the city. Regarding funding, though, they are looking at about a five million dollar total expenditure in the state that would be available for communities to apply for, and they currently have over twenty million dollars of ask right now of that five million dollars. So proportionately, you know, we would be very lucky to get, let's say, a million dollars for this acquisition. Of the actual demolition, this, that money, if we were able to get it, would only be for the environmental portion of the cleanup. And the one distinction I want to make between, Mr. Benicki, you brought up the point of the insurance and the lawsuit that occurred, and if you remember correctly, Uniroil declared bankruptcy, they had a ton of unpaid taxes, they left an environmental mess on the ground, and I think the distinction between this, this is a legacy in industry, so there are environmental contaminations, but the owners of this property were very much environmental stewards in terms of cleaning up, taking care of their own mess. This is a much different facility than what Uniroil was. So there will be environmental cleanups. It is a six million dollar estimated demolition to get it to the ground cost in cleanup, but it is a much better site overall than the environmental mess that the EPA had to fund millions of dollars to clean up, even Uniroil, before we even got to it. I don't imagine the EPA will be involved in this property. I think this is gonna be a total local effort. So I just wanted to make that distinction. I don't think that's same. And ultimately, that lawsuit against Uniroil, I think only brought back a few hundred thousand dollars of that incredibly tens of millions of dollars that was spent to clean up that property. So we will pursue all avenues, but I wanted to make that distinction on the record because I think the owners who took care of a great deal of the asbestos and the tanks and the other chemicals that were on that property, I think they deserve credit for doing what they could at that time. So, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Prince?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present with us this evening who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak in opposition? If so, please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mr. Compton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, there's a lot of history there, as the mayor said. Recent history, my father worked there for, I don't know how many years, a lot. My father-in-law retired from there. Both my brother-in-laws worked there. And I worked there as an electrician, doing service work there a couple different times throughout my career. It's a place I don't like to see go. It's a place I remember watching hundreds of men come out of that building when we would go, my mom and I would go down to pick my dad up from work. Hundreds of households being supported from jobs at Dodge Manufacturing. But nothing's forever. It is not, you know, it is the right thing for us to do. It is something I think we have a duty to do as the City of Michawaca, if we can at all possible, possibly do it. And I like the fact that we are doing it. Other communities don't do this and let things set for way, way, way too long. We have an opportunity to do this, and I think the timing is right, and I think it's what we need to do. So I support this, and thank you for bringing this to us, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Hazen?
Just a comment. I agree too with Mr. Compton and the mayor that this is the time we have to jump on this. While I'm not always supporting the city being in the real estate business, I think sometimes we have to do it. And I know this is gonna cost us a lot of money, but at the price we're paying, I guarantee you, there's people waiting in line that if the city doesn't jump on this, they're gonna, they're gonna snap it up, and it's gonna sit there for another thirty years, deteriorating and being an eyesore. So I totally support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazen. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, then I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes nine-two-zero. Resolution number R-2022-05, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Michawaca, Indiana, approving a petition of the Michawaca Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 3931 Lincoln Way East. This is a use variance to allow microblading at an existing hair salon, 3931 Lincoln Way East, for That Hair Place.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on proposed Resolution 2022-05. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Cook. I'm here on behalf of my wife, Linda. 3931 Lincoln Way East is the hair salon, That Hair Place. Currently, we made big changes last year because of several things in the work environment, staffing, we decided to go to independent contractors and completely moved from commission-based. And in doing that, incorporated the building, incorporated the business. Two young ladies are now leasing from us, licensed estheticians, that are performing as estheticians. This microblading is just one more piece they can add to their abilities to service their customers that other salons are doing currently within the City of Michawaca, which leads us to this evening to solicit the variance.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the council? Thank you. You're gonna let her get off the hook and not have to say anything, huh? All right, you're a nice guy. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please unmute your microphone. Is there anyone here physically present who wishes to speak in opposition? And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mr. Compton?
Mr. President, this is more of a question for you, if possible, that we'll see another one of these right after this, and we've seen microblading variance requests before. Why does this need to come before the council?
You know, I'll defer to Mr. Prince, but if you recall our prior conversations on this very topic here in the chamber, technically, under the zoning code and under the law, this is considered more akin to a tattoo than it is to a cosmetic activity. You know, I think we've said, I've said here, that I think long-term, it would behoove us to take a look at our existing zonings ordinance structure and see if there's a way that we could fit this into the existing zoning ordinances without the necessity of having people come before us for the use variance, but we're just not there yet with regard to our existing body of law. So because of that tattoo component, if you look at the staff report, it talks about the fact that this is within close proximity of a park and a school, which is typically not what our zoning ordinance would anticipate would take, would be the case with regard to tattoos, right or wrong. That's what is embedded in it. So I think this is more, the state of the art has gotten out in front of our zoning ordinance and other structures, and we'll have to address it as time allows, but now that we've learned that Mr. Prince is gonna be the project manager for the Dodge redevelopment project, he may not have an opportunity to make this a first priority, but I think we do need to address that as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Did I at all answer your question?
You did. No, you did. It relates to it being tattoos which don't fit in this zoning pocket, if you will, description. So because of that, it needs to have a variance.
And I'll defer to Mr. Triple as well, but tattoo parlors, tattoo operations are a conditional use that's approved rather than being allowable as a freestanding matter. Is that accurate, Mr. Triple?
I think that's right. So the law goes back to when tattoo parlors were considered, ooh, and it's become much more mainstream today, something we may want to reconsider, if you know what I mean.
I think that's accurate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Prince, you want to come up and clean up any of my mess on that, or are we good? All right, thank you, sir.
I just want to know how I poke, ooh, in the minutes.
Thank goodness for the video. Now you can just cite the lives.
Referring to video.
So if there are no other questions or comments from the council, I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes nine-two-zero. Resolution R-2022-06, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Michawaca, Indiana, approving a petition of the Michawaca Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1238 East University Drive, and this is for a use variance to allow microblading at existing salon at 1238 University Drive.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on proposed Resolution 2022-06. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Tyler Foley, representing Jefferson-Sola, 1238 East University Drive. So we are requesting this use variance, kind of like you mentioned, our services of our estheticians are growing, and microblading is becoming a very popular business. We requested and were approved in 2020 with our Grape Road location, and we're just asking for the same thing in our Granger location, and we have a couple of our tenants that in the past have done microblading in other cities, and they would like to continue that in their new salons here in Granger.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward to the podium. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes nine-two-zero.
Ordinance is on second reading.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposed ordinance number 2022-04, an ordinance amended in chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Michawaca, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the Zoning Ordinance of 1966 of the City of Michawaca, Indiana. This is to rezone from R1 residential to R3 residential for eight residential homes and accessory buildings at the northeast corner of East Jefferson Boulevard and Maplehurst Avenue for a trupe town. The petitioner has requested withdrawal.
Thank you. Mr. Compton?
Mr. President, I make a motion to honor our petitioner's withdrawal, or request to withdraw the motion.
Second. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the withdrawal of proposed ordinance 2022-04 at the request of the petitioner. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In the opinion of the chair, the matter passes unanimously, so proposed ordinance 2022-04 is now withdrawn.
Proposed ordinance number 2022-06, an ordinance amended in chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Michawaca, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the Zoning Ordinance of 1966 of the City of Michawaca, Indiana. This is to rezone from R1 NC4 to C4 auto-oriented commercial for proposed car wash, drive-and-shine at the northwest corner of Lincoln Way West and Bittersweet Road.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Michawaca, your Committee on Land Use Planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2022- to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2022-06, report that they have examined said matter and that their opinion should be adopted, and this is signed by the entire committee.
Second. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, we will move into second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 2022-06. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Steve Ruby, Aben Marsh Consulting, 315 East Jefferson, excuse me, West Jefferson, South Bend, Indiana, representing Drive and Shine facility. As previously mentioned, there is a few things going on here, one regarding the right-of-way vacation. But the second part to this is there are properties to the west of the main property that was purchased, and they're looking, the owner's looking to acquire these said properties. Those are currently his own, the residential, R1 designation. In order for him to operate the business, he needs this to be rezoned, of course, to C4 to allow for that business use. And this would allow him then to improve the sequence for the proposed car wash, drive sequence, similar to the other Drive and Shines located in the area. So a very similar feel, a very good business that he has produced here. He's looking to take the existing All-Star Car Wash that was there, that's been shut down for a couple of years now, to improve that into another car wash facility, but similar to the Drive and Shine. So allowing this to rezone and properly used will allow him to develop this car wash facility.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Mrs. Volker.
Thank you. Hi, just had a question. Has, has, have the properties to the west been purchased yet, or is the purchase dependent on the rezoning?
The purchase is dependent on the rezoning. There are purchase agreements in hand, and it's just waiting for this process to go through before those carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? I'm sorry, if you would, please come forward.
John Pericini, 633 Windy Cove, Mishawaka, Coldwell Banker, Commercial Real Estate. Mr. Torani purchased this last year sometime, and as you know, it's kind of a rundown corner right now. And we started the process, we met with Ken, and kind of sorted out a layout, and then began to meet with the neighbors of the properties that we wanted to purchase. We got that worked out. And then we met with a couple of times, Ken had recommended the meet with Ms. Gilbert and Jim, and kind of tried to work out that situation. They had stuck quite a bit of money in that property on the corner there, which is very attractive to the area. And so we worked kind of through that with the vacation and how to access and put a fence up and landscaping and things like that. So we also worked, not to get ahead of it, but we worked with the liquor store next door about the vacation of that. That has really never been improved there, obviously, but it was, the right-of-way is there. So we are actually in the process of closing on two of the properties in a couple of days. And then, one, we're waiting on a tenant to get out. We've given them, he's given them post-closing so they can get out and all that. We did meet with the neighbors, Mr. Hazen and Mr. Mamalenti requested that, so I met with them and at a neighborhood association meeting at the fire station, and we went, we had a pretty good meeting, had quite a few people there, and showed the site plans and, you know, some of the questions they had. So nothing's coming out on Lincoln Way, as Steve said, it's all coming out on Bittersweet. So it's probably really gonna improve the corner considerably. I mean, he's gonna tear it down, put a substantial improvement there. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pericini?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh.
Not a question, Mr.? I just wanted to make a comment and thank you again on behalf of Mr. Hazen and I for attending our meeting and answering all the questions from the, our constituents and then some. You did a great job and answered them very well.
Thank you. We, you know, you always like to try to get to the neighbors as soon as you can, so, because before, information that may not be accurate out, and then they get to see the plan, and so that, that was a good meeting. There was quite a few people there, it was nice, yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? And now, is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Once again.
Hello, Kristen Staype, 4112 Vestula Road, Mishawaka, Indiana. I live in the area, I've lived in the area for three years now, and I like the area as it is. It's just a few blocks away from just the edge of Osceola there, a little town, nothing. I mean, it's cute in its own way, not too busy of Osceola area. But when you look at Bittersweet and Lincoln Way, it is considerably busy. It's congested area, it's got Martin's there, it's got Starbucks on the corner, CVS, the Arby's, the Walgreens. It's congested in its own way, and it has enough cars going around the area. I think Drive and Shine would just increase the congestion and possibly cause accidents. If you've ever driven on Main Street there, it goes out into the street when they're, when it's a bright sunny day. And it's going out on the Main Street there. And we don't need that on Bittersweet. It's already, like, we, we, we don't need the congestion. Second of all, oh, going back to that, the Main Street location is also a bigger area than what would be on the corner of Bittersweet and Lincoln Way. So I can't see that going well for a small little plot. Second of all, the American Classic Car Wash is the area car wash. It's, it's only location that I know of. It's the nice little mom and pop car wash that it is, and it does well. It's, it's, we, we don't need another car wash there that's gonna push them out. Drive and Shine already has five other locations in Mishawaka, not including its El Cart and Michigan locations. So I don't think we need another Drive and Shine to just boost them, you know? It's, not to mention, there's already plenty of other car washes in the area, Mishawaka area. We, we don't need another car wash. So that's all I have to say. I don't want to drive in China.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? And thank you. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak in opposition? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mrs. Volker.
Thank you. I just had a question for our Aben Marsh friend, just regarding traffic congestion. Can you talk a little bit about that and how the traffic, how Drive and Shine might impact traffic on that corner and?
Yes. So currently, the way they address the drive, the driving and mobility into and out of the side is they've got stacking lanes. These stacking lanes on the location that we're proposing is well over 150 feet, three lanes wide, as well as a bypass lane that gets traffic around the pay station if those events happen. There are plenty of places to pull off to the side into it and park at the facility as well, which will alleviate some of that stacking that is of concern that goes back to the Bittersweet location. So it does address upwards of 20-plus vehicles stacking in that location, as well as the queue line into the car wash for stacking as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Then any other questions or comments from the council?
Well, just briefly, ma'am, thank you for your comments. You did a nice job. And in response to Mrs. Volker's questions, I'm glad she asked it, we talked a little bit about the traffic. One of the things that is very common for us to hear is that whatever is proposed, people will understandably say, "We have too many of," fill in the blank, whatever it is, car wash, gas station, restaurant, i- is very common. And it's understandable, to a certain extent, we're not allowed, under Indiana law, to make decisions based upon that. How many is too many is in the eye of the beholder. And when you have a willing seller who's willing to sell their property to a willing buyer, it, it's difficult for us to stand in the way of that. So even if we agreed with you as individuals, the law doesn't, doesn't allow us to make decisions based upon that type of factor, and we all take an oath every time that we take office to follow the law. So your points are well taken, and we appreciate it, and we, we heard a lot of good information tonight. But based upon that fact and what I've heard, I continue to believe that since this is an existing car wash use, that this project will not only address some of the aesthetic issues, but based upon what I just heard, it feels to me like the traffic concerns, to the extent that they will continue, will be addressed on the interior of the property and on balance will help rather than hurt the surrounding neighborhood and the community. So I appreciate the information that we've heard tonight, both pro and con, but I will be voting in favor of this. And with that, if there are no other questions or comments from the council, I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 920. Proposed ordinance number 2022-07, an ordinance amended in chapter 137 of the municipal code of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is right-of-way vacation for planned adjacent car wash development, Drive and Shine at Wayne and Pennsylvania Avenue.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2022-7, report that they have examined said matter and that their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move forward with acceptance.
Second. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee reports. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will now move into the second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 2022-07. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record for the fourth or fifth time, it feels.
Steve Ruby, Aben Marsh Consulting, 315 West Jefferson, South Bend, Indiana. Pertaining to the right-of-way vacation of both Wayne Street and Pennsylvania, this will be important to allow the Drive and Shine property to not only acquire the other properties, but also unify the property as one, and allowing its drive sequence to proceed accordingly for the driveway, Drive and Shine operations.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ruby? Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to ask you a quick question. Is it merely coincidence that Drive and Shine's most expensive car wash is called Ruby?
Well, you know, I tried to talk to the owner about that, you know what that means, but he kind of shot it down for me, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Ruby?
Just a couple, Mr. Ruby. Since we're now, again, talking about the vacation, can you, in, there is information that's provided us to the staff report about the impact on the neighborhood. There are some findings that we have to make under state law in order to vacate a public right-of-way with regard to negative impact upon the surrounding neighbors. Can you touch on what impact this vacation would have on that residential property immediately to the west and then to others who live in close proximity to the site?
Yes. So the current Wayne Street is a north-south dead-end cul-de-sac that exists. It, it services three of the residents, as well as the tenant that's immediately west off of Lincoln Way Avenue. As part of working through the agreements with those different ownerships, some are in purchase agreements, as previously stated. Others, we come to an agreement on how to address the Wayne Street vacation and access to their properties by allowing a private drive access, improving landscape, improving the aesthetic features within the adjacent land use there with the car wash. So nice screening, nice buffering, nice fencing, additional landscape that goes into it as well. Pennsylvania is undeveloped, so there was no access through Pennsylvania street there. And because of that, there's not a, a drive or access point to Wayne Street off of Bittersweet. It doesn't impact a lot of the circulation through that area. As far as the greater surrounding areas, because we're reducing some of the, you know, impacts with a second entrance point of Wayne Street there, we are, we, we believe improving the transportation, the circulation around the site, because we're not having a secondary entrance point after, or just to the west of Bittersweet. So we feel that that's gonna improve the transpo drop-off, the sidewalk access for pedestrians, the overall aesthetic, and it also addresses a rundown facility. So we, we feel that it's gonna strongly improve the area and surrounding neighborhoods.
So then would it be a fair summary that if this vacation of a right-of-way is approved, no adjoining landowner will be landlocked as a result of the vacation of this?
That's correct. No, nobody's gonna be landlocked and they'll have their own access.
The other issue that's emphasized in the staff report is the commitments that your client are willing to make with regard to landscaping and improvements to that private drive to the west of the property. Can you talk a little bit more about those commitments?
Correct. So currently, in, in our audience today, that those owners are here. The commitments that the owner has made is to improve the landscape, address the, the fencing that goes along there, improve their drive, so it becomes now a private drive for their access in and out. It's no longer a shared public street. And the owner is willing to pay for all those set improvements to their properties, as well as the adjacent car wash facility.
And as is set out in the staff report and anticipated by the ordinance that we're gonna approve, your client will be providing written commitments that further flush out those conditions prior to the, the actual vacation of the right-of-way, correct?
Right. Those, those commitments have been made and have been signed off by the owner, as well as the landowners themselves. So that has all been up and upfront with them and ready to go.
And you've been authorized by your client to make those commitments so that when you stand in front of us and say that certain things are gonna be done, you have the authority to give us peace of mind that they'll be followed through?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Any, Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. Hicksonbaugh. Thank you again, Mr. Ruby. A quick question, and maybe you or Mr. Pericini would be best to answer this. I did drive by the location today, and I did recall seeing it in operation, that cars were being washed there.
Okay, so they're back and, and running.
So I just didn't know if that was under the, the agreement until the property's closed, or how long they'll be operating?
I can't speak to those specific agreements. Maybe Mr. Pericini can speak to those?
Okay.
He did open, it's been open for a while. He, he opened it actually pretty quickly. And so he's just gonna run it till this gets done, and then he'll start tearing it down.
Okay.
But it's been operational, you know, basically with one person there.
Sure.
He, he did put some money into it, improve it, but just kind of to get it by to, you know, get to this point.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Emmons?
Thank you. Mr. Pericini? I don't know which one of you want to answer this, but Drive and Shine is a very classy operation. I mean, the facilities are second to none in that, but they're building more and more, and they seem to be having trouble staffing it. And this is just something to pass along. They offer certain price ranges and everything like that, VIP and everything. Well, when you go into it, they don't have the staffing to honor what they're selling. You pull up and you go through the thing to get inside and outside, and then they say, "Well, we don't have the staff to do the inside." But you're paying the premium price, but you can't get your service. And that is a concern to some of the areas.
I'll cover that with him. He, he'll wanna know.
You know.
He pays, he has always paid a premium for employees, or actually, I know some kids, one of my kids uses a regular form, and other kids from college, and he's always paid fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not complaining about the, about the cost, but it's just that.
I'm just saying that that might be just the nature of the beast right now with most employers trying to get people.
But he doesn't lower the price, and this is the thing, you know, for his VIP service and everything, and yet you can't get it. So just to kind of pass that on to the, the owners, that it is a concern.
And this one here is not gonna be like the Main Street. It'll be more like the one up in Roseland, it's a little smaller. And he's kind of gone to, you know, no cash, more automatic for that reason. The little stations and stuff, trying to minimize some of that because of it. I'll pass it on to him, because he takes a big pride in, in, in his car washes and the service.
Yeah. And each one of his facilities is a little. And each one of his facilities is a little bit different than the other one. Each one that he builds is a little bit different.
Which one do you have in Main Street?
No, the one that gets a lot of problems is the one on, right?
Ironwood?
Ironwood and, Ironwood.
You know, he actually does more car washes there than he does up on Break Road. Car washes, not, not the service and stuff. So I didn't believe it when he told me that, but it's true. At first, I was hard to believe he could do more car washes than he could on Main Street. But I'll mention it to him. He'll want to know, you know. And his son runs the businesses with him. They take a lot of pride in it, so he'll want to know about it.
Well, I say, it's a classy facility that he builds. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like the majority of those cars are Mr. Emmons's, that location.
I'm sure you told them, went through that, too.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm not bashful.
No, you are not, Mr. Emmons. Are there any additional questions from the, questions or comments from the council then at this point? In hearing none, I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 9 to 0.
Thank you. With that, we will move into privilege of the floor. And at this point, members of the public are invited to the podium to speak with regard to not agenda items only under privilege of the floor.
President, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to come up and speak from privilege of the floor. I'm here tonight just as an informational session. My name is Brad Addison. I reside at 1322 Cantindale Lane. I happen to be principal of Emmons Elementary for School City of Mishawaka here in the beautiful Princess City. And I wanted to come tonight to bring to your attention an event that unfortunately has been three years in the making, and finally get to bring the event to fruition. Emmons Elementary was selected as the ISTA Outreach to Teach Grant recipient back in 2019. The grant was supposed to be fulfilled, the event was supposed to be fulfilled in April of 2020. And unfortunately, we all know what happened in 2020. So unfortunately, we've been postponed for a full two years. We are finally getting to fulfill our grant opportunity for the ISTA Outreach to Teach, which is an opportunity for young, up-and-coming educators to do an outreach project for a deserving school. We were selected out of quite a few different submissions. One of our former teachers, Janine Reynolds, actually filled out the grant for Emmons and was able to be part to get us selected. The focus of the grant is to give basically a facelift to a deserving school. It's going to incorporate about 100 to 120 volunteers, many of them up-and-coming educators from around the state of Indiana, from institutions such as Manchester, Vincennes, Evansville, and several other throughout the state are going to come up and act as volunteers and go through a different, various stages of projects to give our school a facelift. Right now, we're looking at donations, taking in donations to help take on the project. And we are certainly open to any volunteers that would like to come and help us on April 9th to complete any of those projects. Certainly, we'd love to see some of the council out there. You can have a paintbrush, shovel, wheelbarrow. Certainly love to have anybody out there doing anything that we can. But really, just wanted to bring the information to the council, certainly bring some support, bring some awareness to the city schools of School City of Mishawaka, and really just to the opportunity to have this event at our school from around the state. We're going to be seeing young educators from all over the state, many of them attending state universities within Indiana, however, not planning on teaching in Indiana, and hopefully being able to recruit some of them to stay here and help us with our teacher shortage that we're experiencing right now in the state. But I brought some, just some information for you that I'd love to hand out to the council. And certainly, I can answer any questions for anyone. But really, just looking to hopefully support and, like I said, hopefully have some more faces out there on April 9th.
Thank you. Mr. Emmons?
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Kind of to give you an idea, what kind of facelift are you talking about? Outside, inside, both, or what?
Both, both, actually. A lot of what we, we can't necessarily do a lot of large-scale construction projects, partially because these are college kids and so forth, and obviously liabilities with those things. But a lot of it has to do with painting, landscaping, refurbishing of some basic things within the building. One of the focal areas is the teacher's lounge, part of it being is trying to give back for the teachers that are, you know, dedicate their lives to the youth of our community. So try and make that teacher's lounge more inviting for the teachers to have a break room and so forth. If you've ever been in our building, which you're welcome to come and visit, primarily, most of it was built in the 1950s, and most of it is still in the 1950s, including our coral tile walls, if you walk through, and so forth. But a lot of it is just painting, a lot of it is sprucing up and making it a more inviting environment for the kids and the teachers. We have a lot of landscape projects set on the, on the bill for outside, including some benches and spots for parents to sit and wait as they pick up their children, and just really trying to make it a more inviting feel for the overall community and the kids.
Yeah, I entered that school when it first opened, so I'm very familiar with that school. And then, and then also by serving on the board for 20 years, so. But are they going to be just one day? Is that just a one-day project?
The actual college kids coming in to help is a one-day project, April 9th. There's a lot of prep work that goes in beforehand. Luckily for us, this event falls on our spring break week, actually, at the end of it. We'll be doing a lot of prep work to get things ready for those college kids and volunteers throughout that week and weeks coming up in terms of purchasing, getting materials there and things like that, which we've already started doing. But the actual event is really one, one big project on that day. So hopefully, anywhere, anywhere from 100 to 120 volunteers will be able to accomplish quite a bit in one day.
Now, I'd be happy to volunteer some time on that April 9th. So what do we do? Just fill up, or do we?
Actually, the information is on the flyer here that I have to hand out. You can go on to ISTA's site and register, and they will ask you basically shirt size, things like that. And actually, if the common council would be interested in sponsoring anything, get, you know, a little bit of good press on the back of the shirts as we get them out to all of our volunteers and things like that. But all the information's on the flyer for you that I'll hand out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anything I can answer?
Any other questions for Mr. Addison? Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not a question, but more of a comment. Just wanted to say thanks for the presentation, and more importantly, thanks to you and your wonderful staff at Emmons for all that you guys do. I know my wife's a substitute teacher, she's a teacher there sometimes, and she holds you guys in all high regards. So thank you for what you've done for all the past years and continuing what you're doing. Thank you.
We certainly appreciate her help when she's with us.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Addison?
Well, Brad, I'm a little bit familiar with this program, and I know that it's a great honor for the school corporation for Emmons. So thank you to ISTA and for everyone who's involved in doing the hard work, including you. Because I know that there is an obligation on the part of the principal of a school that's chosen, and as well, it's an honor. You're juggling a lot of other responsibilities as a principal, so thank you for the work that you do. I will probably not be volunteering because I would be more of a detriment than a help with regard to my lack of skills. But I'm sure your printed information has guidance with regard to how people can donate.
Absolutely.
But for the sake of anybody who's viewing this live or is going to view the live stream, who should they contact if they want to make a donation to the cause?
Actually, if they would log on to the Indiana State Teachers Association website, the ISTA, there's, on the front part of their webpage, it says Outreach to Teach Program. It has links to the donation portion of the site, and they can do so right from there.
Perfect. So the ISTA website is the one-stop shopping for volunteering and donations as well.
Absolutely.
And then last but not least, Mr. Mamalenti asked me to share with you that he wants the record to reflect that you are like the third or fourth best wrestling coach in the history of John Young Middle School, somewhere after him. And then you guys can fight it out as to which order you come in.
I'm out there for to take down wins.
All right, you were noted. But, but thank you for the information and the presentation and for the work that you're doing at Emmons Elementary School.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Seeing no one, then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, Dave Wood, Mayor, here to remind you that next week is our annual State of the City address, 6 o'clock here in the council chambers. Just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that, and this is the age of sports betting. I don't know if there's State of the City betting, but we'll do a little different setup this year. So I'll give you that teaser for the inner council pool.
Rumor has it, it's on DraftKings already, so you can log in and guess the length of the State of the City. But thank you. We look forward to it. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Betty Karenin. I live at 431 West Lawrence in Mishawaka, Indiana. I do realize that the zoning for Mishawaka Troop Town, all of that has been approved. But I did want to speak as a Marine veteran and a veteran volunteer in the area. I work with a ridiculous amount of veteran organizations in the area for the last decade. I got out in April of 2012, so I've been in the area for over a decade, working with reefs across America. If you ever pass Fairview Cemetery, the reefs that are on the gravesites there, that's one of the events that I coordinate in the area. I work with Team RWV here locally. I was the Veteran Engagement Director. I work with the Marine Corps League, Opt One Bets. I work with several different organizations. I kind of pride myself in helping and getting them to work together. But I'm also a recovering alcoholic. When I got home in 2012, my family helped me. I was lucky to come home and have family that helped get me the support that I needed. I just wanted to address the council on the location and for you to take the seriousness of this. I am a firm supporter in Mishawaka Troop Town. It's going to be, what, the third in the country? I, I've even bought a brick to help support Mishawaka Troop Town. So I'm a full supporter in it. I, but... Okay. Because of the importance of it, I don't feel like we should shoot ourselves in the foot as a community and do it insufficiently without having full knowledge of substance abuse when it comes to transitional housing, mental health issues as far as. And with it, there's a chronic issue in the veteran community with the socialization of drinking. Mind you, when I was getting out of the military, I was trying to get help with my drinking, which was almost impossible while I was active duty. That's kind of what we're taught to do, to deal with our issues. So it wasn't until I got out where it was even remotely possible for me to get sober and sustain sobriety. So what I'm saying is, I've seen this in several different organizations that I've worked through, and it's very disheartening, where they want to do like adult-only functions. And the veteran community that's getting out right now, they're very family-oriented. And with the location being right next to the VFW, they're almost giving them a written invitation for their, that, to be their community. And there's a bar establishment in there. Can I now, with almost nine years of sobriety, walk into a bar? Yes. I go to the Level Up program at the VFW once a month. But I also have a substantial amount of sobriety under my belt. These people that are going to be, the veterans that are going to be living in this transitional housing, do not have that sobriety under the belt. They have no business being in or near a facility like that. I didn't. I tried it, and I relapsed several times because of it. I just, I couldn't... And this is probably going to diminish my reputation in the community for even speaking out on this. So I was very nervous to even get in front of you guys at all, just because of the people. I didn't want it to come off as I'm against it. I just want it to be done correctly so we aren't, so other communities can mirror what we do, and we don't end up doing it incorrectly where we're shooting other communities in the foot from being able to do this in the future because we didn't do it correctly. We didn't think it through. We didn't have everything in place that we should have. And whoever is going to be running the facility, are they going, like, is any, is the council or is the city going to do anything to mandate their qualifications? Do they have suicide awareness training? Do they have substance abuse training? Any of that?
Ma'am, I can address that for you. At this point, the city is not the operator of Troop Town. We did approve the rezoning for the second site, not the one where the petition was withdrawn this evening, but for the original site. Terms of the operation, how that's going to play out remains to be seen. And I think we all appreciate the point that you're making. But my suggestion would be that you deal with the operators of Troop Town with regard to those issues, because as much as we appreciate the concern that you're raising, that's really not an issue for the city or the council in particular to address. That is for those who operate Troop Town to address. My own experience has been that they're very open to listening to those type of concerns. So I would certainly encourage you to reach out to them, some of whom who are in the back room yet this evening, and address that with them. But we do appreciate the concern that you're bringing to us this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Thank you. With that, we will move into unfinished business, of which there is none. New business. Is there any new business to come before the council? Madam Clerk?
Just a reminder that we have meeting change dates for April. The April 4th meeting is moved to April 11th, and the April 18th meeting is moved to April 19th.
Thank you. We can all use those reminders. Any other new business to come before the council? Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to notify my colleagues and the public as well that I'll be chairing a American Rescue Plan Act, which is COVID Relief Fund Committee. We'll be hosting a fun-filled evening of presentations from some of the local entities that will be presenting to us and perhaps asking for some of those funds. Myself, Mr. Compton, and Ms. Volker will be hosting that meeting, which will take place on April 25th at 6 o'clock at the council chambers, if that's available.
Thanks. Let me know.
I am right now. We just discovered this.
I'll check and see if that's, if it is available.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
Breaking news from the ARPA committee. Thank you, Mr. Mamalenti. Any other new business to come before the council? Hearing none, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.